I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And we approve the minutes then of those three dates, the next meeting, let me get this as well if that works for you guys at the mall same time. It won't be a mentally approved, it's just a fact will be met per state guidelines if we had approval by the email for the claims and payroll. Then we have payroll amount one hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
And this is a normal payroll.
Yeah.
They're doing okay.
You didn't seem a little small there, didn't you?
And I make a motion to approve payroll of one hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
All the picks out. We need our colleagues received the payroll claims accounts payable report, amount one hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
And I make a motion to approve or acknowledge voucher for one hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-four, twenty-five.
All fair and sound. Okay, we have a request for an anti-check. Now, would you explain that to us, what that's for?
Yes, this is, um, one hundred, this is twelve thousand, two hundred dollars, and this is for the jail, is to be, um, for their air conditioning, and they're giving their air conditioning that they had to replace.
Well, money's there in place.
Money's there. And here's a bill, if you'd like to look at it.
We discussed, you know, we had this COVID thing. Yep.
And COVID setting every month.
Yep. So we have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the anti-check that they, to pay motion, we can't afford twelve thousand, two hundred dollars. I'll second that.
All fair and sound.
And Randy has one, that one more anti-check we can see.
Okay. Hey, we just have a request here for grant application, um, it's from the probation department, it's a state grant, in the amount of eight thousand, five hundred dollars, so all we have to do is just acknowledge here and approve that he was applying for that in Iowa. He decided on the backside of it, so we need a motion to approve the grant request.
I make a motion to approve the probation grant for eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Go out and seek it.
I'll second. All fair and sound. All right, then we have a nine-one-one grant, in the amount of, oh, that's emergency, that's what that is, yeah. Chris, uh, Chris wants to claim what this is?
This is a grant from the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute for thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven thousand dollars to, uh, to assist with the COVID response for criminal justice entities in the state, in the county, including the police departments, sheriffs, jail, the judge, prosecutor, um, and so, emergency management was helping them by managing the grant, but the individual law enforcement and criminal justice agencies will develop the requirements for it. This is a part of the larger COVID response that the state is pushing money out towards.
Is it a matching grant?
It is not a matching grant, no.
A hundred percent?
It's a hundred percent reimbursement for the ability to prepare for, respond to, and prevent, okay.
And it don't conflict with anything else?
No, it does not conflict with anything else.
I make a motion to approve the, when we go after the E-nine-one-one grant, the thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and twenty-one cents.
All fair and sound. Thanks, sir. Okay, we have a waste history. Balance due on what we owe for the solid waste history. That balance is seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars, seven five cents, we just have to prove that invoice.
I make a motion to approve the invoice for the less central solid waste history, seven thousand, five eighty-five, second that.
All fair and sound. Okay. Next up, we have a, just a, what's that, next letter I have? Yeah, I just didn't have a, there for that, but.
The, I'd like this.
Okay. Um, I just, I've already talked to him, they just voted to postpone the fireworks move into September fifth, that's Labor Day week instead. So there was always question, and I know the state was trying to be, I don't know, keep whatever word it is by setting July fourth as being the date to set all these things free, but these people, all these groups can make the decision on July fourth whether they have their fireworks or not, so they postponed that to September fifth. I suspect we'll see that score comes along, so we don't have to prove it or anything, it's just them letting us know that that's what they're going to do for fireworks. Larry, if you got that, that's Rockville Lake Fireworks, Rockville Lake Park is going to be on September, September fifth. All right. Now, we have the inner letter here for historic preservation archaeology, it's just dealing with the Guthrie House. Guthrie House is that one of my, um, Gollers not, that's the Guthrie House. Just letting us know that they're going through the motion for that. Okay. This next, I talked to this lady, and I appreciate her concern, I've been out there many times, this is Elise Brown. West Union coverage has probably been the biggest challenge for me as far as keeping it clean, I have painted over graffiti fouls up in there multiple times. Someone has taken upon themselves at some point, and I don't know if that was done back when the court ordered someone to do it, they were caught and the court ordered it, but it looks like someone had used a power, um, wash on it to take the graffiti off. And her concern is that it's certain way fires of the wood as well, so it's probably not a good, good idea. What I've always done is paint it with the, with the stain, so the stain will go into the wood, but it doesn't last a day, they're back that same day. And of course, the topic's always about putting cameras in there to try to catch somebody doing that kind of thing, but they would just steal the camera, so. If they're, they're just big, big wooden, unpowered structures out in the middle of nowhere, and it gets go there at three o'clock in the morning, and I don't know how you even try to stop that stuff, it's just scary, the same thing with fire prevention. So, her concern is that, that they, that they stopped the power washing part of it. She just keeps talking about the amount of graffiti, and I know, I understand there is a lot. I've been out, like I said, that's part of my biggest workplace for me on taking graffiti off cover bridges. She says here, seems that graffiti problem is more prominent here than in other bridges because West Union's remote location and status of the bypass bridge. So please consider installing trail cam in the bridge or advising the increase of patrol of West Union. These crimes of vandalism should be prosecuted, I agree. And it's just tough, because of guard. Not that I'm worried, no, I don't know what they're doing there. I don't know if her picture showed, but if you go out there, and first, I thought maybe it was like, for this like circular stuff, like they did sand it all, she thinks the power washing, you think about it?
Looks like, like I've done a lot of pressure washing, it looks like when you make the circular stuff, the pressure washing.
The last, the last picture got it on there. And, any pictures, picture there on the last one, what it looked like. But that's pretty uniform circle there, yeah.
The house, but on there.
Yeah.
I mean, the house lights are used or spread out.
Yeah, that is, uh, it almost looks like a streamlined.
Yeah, that looks like a stream, yeah.
Type of a house, but they put on power washers.
That's true, I think it impossible to stop.
Unless they had it good that years ago, Larry, what year was it, they got caught for graffiti and the judge made them go, uh, run that graffiti off and try to.
Wasn't that Ron, when Ron Brown was the judge?
Been that long, really?
I, I think it was. I think it was.
No, I know the highway department hasn't, I know there's no county, county person that's done that too. Okay. And we have a permit here for future adjustments and changes.
With ID.
Yeah, with ID. There is more discussion still about getting some wastewater up in that part of the county sometime, and you remember, we were doing this about twenty years ago, the state was ready to give us, the state wanted to get out of the state park, and they were ready to give the county. They were going to build a wastewater treatment plan, just give it to the county and take care of, that long took care of Bloomingdale, Marshall, and, uh, for the state park, Bloomingdale, Marshall, Bloomington, and the Greenland, and now it was going to operate, so. By the way, I mean, this time it'll, it'll work. Then talks about forty-one bridge, I had somebody ask me this morning, and I didn't know, they were going up this morning, it's going to be closed, but I know forty-one's closed yet by Tanjier, they're going to close sometime today. Anyways, that bridge, just this, just before you get to the Tanjier turnoff, it's that bridge that's going to close. Yeah, Randy's going to bring a thing for us to sign as a unofficial detour. Way the unofficial detour to work, it's not official detour, so all the trucks, all that stuff has to go over to, uh, to sixty-three, down to thirty-six, and up to, uh, internet tape it. But for most traffic that use it, but the purpose of that is then, they will take pictures, we will take pictures, and do an assessment of the condition of the roads, and then if it has been beaten up as a result of being the run around, then the state will fix that, we had that done in the past. Okay, we have a couple of simple cases here, do you familiar with those, any of those?
Yeah, one, the first one I am, the second one I, this is the first time I've seen it, but, um, first one's a land dispute where adjoining property owners are fighting about access to and from land, one of the lands is sold, and the new owner's concerned about being accessed as property, as my understanding. There's a county road involved where there's been a bridge washed out, but it's no longer usable, it's not on our inventory. And then there's another platted path called a road that's not on our inventory. According to Randy, anyway, I didn't talk to him about it. I said for a, um, pre-trip conference to mark us off really far. I did file appearance, and it just sounded yesterday on what's going on.
Traveler's claim here. I have some windshield chips, windshield was chipped by rocks. And that is just a tough situation, so I have insurance company to deal with that, so we'll see how that, how that washes out then. Been in that book myself. Okay. I got a couple things here.
On the old business down there, that should be on there, just.
Okay. First off, let's look at this, um, letter that I gave you, and make this look, um, for those who didn't know, um, the CARES Act, Federal CARES Act, gave, I think, like two point eight billion dollars, I think, to Indiana for the COVID response. Of that, three hundred million dollars have been ran into the counties, all ninety-two counties, uh, from the state, and that is done purely by population, there's no other determining factors, population only, so we get so much per capita. So Park County gets about five hundred and forty-nine thousand, I think, for its COVID response. That's like to pay for the, uh, the personal protection equipment for all the fire departments, emergency management, and emergency medical services, all those things, anything that was outside of normal budgeted items. So the commissioners are responsible by this legislation, we are responsible to take in all the invoices to determine what is legitimate, what's not legitimate, and then that's the reimbursement. It will cover any non-budgeted expenses from March twenty-seventh through December thirty-first of this year, so it will be an ongoing process. So what I propose, we do, since it's up to us, I propose that we, and Chris is going to work on this emergency management, that we set up a meeting, it'll be something other than this. A meeting with all the departments, uh, in the courthouse, ambulance service, highway department, every county department represented, all the county fire departments represented, and then we can, and the towns come up, they want to, but the towns get their own money, they won't get counted, they all get between ten thousand, Town Rockville gets eighty-one thousand. I think Marshall, Mecca, Bloomingdale are on that ten thousand dollar range, the Roseville maybe a little bit more than that. And, uh, so we'll have a meeting, sit down, talk about how this works, and they, they'll even provide a speaker for us to talk to, the, or provide, so they understand what this is for and how that would work. And then we'll develop a work group, working group out of that, um, and that will be then the process of bringing the invoices in, the grants in, and Chris will work on that, I know that, um, partnership, Park County will help with that as well, and then we'll get our reimbursement, we'll send them in on a regular basis, we don't have to wait until December thirty-first, it can be an ongoing reimbursement request as we go. So we'll talk about that and get there, but what we do have to do, we do have to approve our taking part in this program, because the chief executive officer, now it would be, be this chair, is responsible for making sure that this is done in a legitimate manner, so let me read this letter real quickly to you. All right. State of Indiana has received a direct distribution of coro, rotor, uh, relief funds from the United States Treasury that may be used for limited purposes set forth in this action, that's just about reimbursement, talks about the three hundred million going to all this. It says the Indiana Finance Authority has been asked to develop a program to enable eligible CARES Act expenditures to quickly be reimbursed, it's got a location there to go to and get the information. Initial guidance from the federal government requires that each state may only reimburse expenditures directly related to addressing the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And that's what that is, and then we have a letter that explains that it's the Indiana Finance Authority that's going to be doing that. And in order to be eligible, the we, each county, has to return this acceptance certification that we have to vote on, and then I, as the chief executive officer, have to sign it, and then the commissioners, and then are responsible for the administration of that five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Which surely shouldn't be complicated, I don't think we're going to have that much in COVID response. We have, this emergency group that we have working between Health Department, Emergency Medical Services, Emergency Management, the Sheriff's Department, commissioners, has just worked wonderfully. We, our numbers have been, been down, we have always had, all the protection, have the equipment we needed, uh, they are in continual search for that, trying to replenish as we go. We have never been without anything at any point, so we're doing, doing well, and I think we were well, and even Amy at Hensley was here before, uh, had stockpile what we needed for that, so we, we went into this in good shape, and it has been carried through this, that, those four other entities, but Sheriff's Department, Health Department, Emergency Medical Services, and Emergency Management, they have done a wonderful job. So, all it says here is that we just need to approve this, it says, Natasha will find a letter from Indiana, it's the management and budget that describes the program, we've got that. So we just need to, to approve the acceptance of our participation in the program, and then I will sign the letter and get it back to them.
I make a motion that we accept the program offered by the state and move forward with seeking reimbursement of costs for the COVID epidemic that we're getting. Second that.
All fair and sound. I will get a, get a copy.
Sign it, correct?
Yes. And just, just by.
Yes.
So I will get a, I will get a copy, and I will sign this, throw it out, and sign it and send it back to them, and then we will plan, next meeting, we'll plan on how we want to run our first meeting and sit down and get started on that and see where we go. Okay. Another question I had that came up. Some offices do, some offices don't, talks about comp time, and one of the office holders who talked to me about this was disturbed that some offices do, some offices don't, she didn't think we should, but some offices always have, I know Pam always had, I know Diane always had. So offices in the courthouse, some of those workers build up comp time by going to conferences. You would know better than anybody, that's what you do, is comp time, have both people go to conferences.
I saw that, and I was, heard a flabbergast.
Me too.
Kind of kept in my mind, that, with their conferences, that's work. I mean, they're being paid to be at a conference, it's, it's just they're not in their office.
They're there.
They're at a conference, okay? And to say that someone should earn comp time for being at a conference, no way, I, I just can't buy that, and as a board of the councilperson, I would have never bought that. Now, comp time is for payment or agree time above and beyond their normal hours.
In the overtime, you're not going to make overtime, you're going to do overtime.
So, I'm, I'm saying in general, I cannot see in any way going to a conference if you earn comp time. But that being said, if there were like evening events that you were required to go to, that you were, uh, educational things, that you were needing for your job, possibly, because normally you would be down at four o'clock, so if you have a, an evening activity at that conference, maybe you could earn the comp time. But, but I think during the day, when you're there during the day.
Yeah, it could be the social time at the, it's got to be.
Yeah, just because you're, yeah, so I, I was flabbergasted when I saw that.
Yeah, we've got to discuss this before, trying to get a handle on this, some do comp time, some don't.
And department head isn't supposed to get comp time anywhere, right, because they're salaried, so it's only the hourly workers who should be getting comp time.
So can I have, tell you what's going on? They don't get comp time during eight to four, they're getting comp time like if you leave at six o'clock in the morning, and you have to be up there at eight o'clock, they're getting that two hours comp time driving, that two hours comp time driving home, they're not getting comp time during the meetings, is this that drive time, is the only thing they're getting comp time on?
So do they not get compensated for driving, or?
Are they not getting a mileage reimbursement?
Whoever drives is going to get the mileage reimbursement. If I go to a conference, I easily drive, the two that goes with me, they only get the comp from six, like, for driving time, time we're in a car.
That's where I go back to, if, if the time work is above and beyond a normal work time, that's the comp that's in play, and so you could argue that that drive time is work time. Because it's before normal work hours, you would earn the comp time.
Yes, you could argue that. But the same token, you know, if you have to drive for, on your two work every day.
Yeah, so you have to take off weight when you're driving.
But let me argue back to the fact that, okay, most of these conferences are done at noon, so you can get back, so what happens to your people when you leave the conference at twelve, if you're back in Rockville two?
They don't get comp time then.
Do they come back to work?
Do they come back to work, or do they go home at two o'clock?
We never get done.
Okay, so if they don't go back to work.
Except for we're done at two.
Technically, the two before.
They go back to work.
Well, that should have been work time to make up for the two hours you drove on Monday, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so.
So in the end, you have to accomplish that all.
Back in my day, when I put sixteen hours, sixteen years in the courthouse, we never had anything like that, and then that came back.
I didn't know they were doing.
And Diane.
My agency, driving time was never allowed to have comp.
Yeah, see, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think of being timed with that, yeah, I'm very ahead of job, where I got paid for the time, I don't tell them until I got to work, my job, my pay started when I got to work.
Because it all kind of started when Diane Hayes left of, back in my time, we didn't, no, we.
So I think, you want to write something up?
Gets me going, that's just.
I, I think, in comp time, sometimes I've been researching anyway, before this virus hit, we were kind of talking about what they call comp time, and so I think we haven't put that addressed in whatever our revision or adjustment to comp time is, and it'd be good to address driving time as part of that.
Yeah, I just think you need, we need to have some kind of clear policy, so all these office holders know.
That's what it is.
When they can, when they don't, because they have, this, this office say, well, our policy is this, and another office says, our policy is this, and the highway department, you shouldn't have, you shouldn't have.
They need to have a handbook, and everybody go.
Yes, we have the same employee handbook.
You know, in general, like I said, I don't see how you can earn comp time unless you work above and beyond your normal hours.
What do you think?
But that's a give and take, because let's say you work, you want, you take Monday off, so you work two hours extra every day, the rest of the week, so you can take Monday off, you still have vacation. State allows you to do that, so for the councilpeople, work instead of their normal seven to five, they would work six to six, they would work twelve hours days to make up for their day. And as long as within the same pay period, that's okay, so as long as you get to your, okay, you're supposed to work forty hours, you work forty hours, there's no comp timer, even though you're not working a day, you're working overtime this day, that's making up for the thing you did work, so you got to.
It should be more in, forty or.
Usually.
Or into maybe hours of two.
Forty hours are greater would be usually as far as that. So if you're taking Monday off, and then you're using hours to make up, and you're not taking a vacation day, then you're not getting forty hours or greater, you're getting.
And you're not getting comp time for the overtime.
Right.
I agree with that, so I do think we need to get something together and get a handle.
We also need to get a handbook, um, and I'm wide open on this, it doesn't matter, but we need to have one, how soon does that comp time need to be used up, that's how we got to work, we love it, we don't accumulate to such crazy numbers for some reason.
It's the max, so I, I need some direction on that, because a lot of places have different policies, like the quarterly ends or yearly or.
Quarters or aggregate typically.
Right. So those are the two ICs, quarterly or annually, or the two, the IC.
With what, at the state? Comp time, did you, did you have comp time at the state, Ruth? Did you have comp time at the state? So was there a time period you had to use it by?
The state would not pay overtime.
That's why we hit that.
It was a cash flow necessity, because the state doesn't have, didn't, at the time, you know, it didn't have the cash to pay overtime, so they said, instead of paying cash, we're going to let you accrue comp time.
And did you have to use it by the end of the quarter or by the end of the year?
The state did not have any.
No restriction on that, so you could build up a year, just take a year off before you retired, wow. Well, that's not good for us, because we've had to buy some back for the county to buy some back, because Randy never gets to take time off, Randy's up there all the time, and.
And a lot of them want comp time taken first, that way it's intentional and expired, they're directed, they're writing the comp time first, and then.
Yeah, we definitely need to expire.
But in reality, Randy shouldn't be getting comp time, because he's a department head salary employee.
Yes.
But then that's, that's a special circumstance, or most, because he's out there when it snows, when you have storms, when you lose bridges, so we had to decide, that's a different category altogether than just somebody putting in a couple extra hours one week, because it's tax time or some other thing, I mean, I don't have an answer to that, I don't know, got to be fair on that, because, you know, our people aren't overpaid the way it is, so you got to be fair on that.
Generally, generally, you know, those type of positions are not comp time, they're regular positions, they're generally not treated that way.
Okay, but technically.
I would have to look and see whether exceptions can be made or not.
And it doesn't have to be codified necessarily, my experience with salary positions is that if I work extra today, I'm going to go home a couple hours early tomorrow, because I worked yesterday.
That's right.
Which is comp time, but it's just not listed as comp time, in your, in your heart and in your, in your work, you know what I is.
Comp time is a legal artwork, I guess, is what I would say, and so I wouldn't, you, him doing that is being comp time necessarily.
Typically, every salaried employee knows how many hours he's supposed to be putting in for that amount of pay, and so you work that, and if you end up, you work more one day than you work less, and that's, you get to that number, unless you just want to give it, I mean, you could always do that, but, yeah, comp time's a rare dog, so. What would be a reasonable time, by the end of the year kind of thing, what do you think would be a reasonable time to come to some plan and we codify and get it?
Well, I, I mean, it, I think we had talked about maybe having the conversations, you know, as far as what we want to include in that, but I can put together amendment to the handbook fairly quickly, if I know what we're amending to. So I don't know, I know that, you know, we want to address comp time as far as the travel to and from conferences or things of that nature, I can include that very easily.
And I think who gets it, we need to.
Who gets it, usually, uh, I don't know if we want to, you know, just kind of do what the state does as far as who gets comp time and who doesn't, that'd probably be my recommendation.
But we don't want to do what the state does with not using it, if you don't want to, we don't want to use that one.
Right.
And I'm.
Cap or something, so I guess.
Yeah, anyway.
It's in determination for you as the board as to when you want to see it expire, if at all. And then I can include that in there in an ordinance amendment to the handbook.
I hate to have a cap, it's because I see somebody, can't, like happened with Bill Cook, when we were down dispatch, gotta have dispatch on that choice, Bill comes in. And if he reaches cap, he's not going to get any more comp times, and now he's working for nothing. Um, so you have to make special exception sometimes for that kind of thing. We had to do that with, with Julie Alanson, same thing, she, she couldn't take her vacation because of COVID thing as well, so we had to work that up to carry that a little farther.
Might include a clause in there that says if, if it's a, if a certain circumstance applies, thinking petition to the board of commissioners for extension or something with a limit on how often you can do that. Uh, if, if we're going to change the comp time, though, I'd say you do it at the start of next year, not at the end.
That's why we're hoping the end of the year, before time comes up here, that's what I think.
Yeah.
And if cleared by the end of the year, it's okay.
I mean, I can, I can have the amendment drafted whenever you want it drafted.
Why don't you do that and we're just looking at it and seeing if it'll go by your. Larry, you got experience with that kind of stuff?
Green County, I know, had, uh, they had a chart they looked at that lists all the employees that have had comp time, they had their hourly rate paid. So they knew what their liability was.
Did they have to use it by a certain time?
I, I don't know what the policy was, the only thing, I didn't see it, I think they're in the same kind of discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and, I, they have a policy, but I don't know, I don't know what it is. I know they had like almost fifty, six thousand dollars in liability.
We had to do a certify or something.
They would walk out the door once and say, pay me, then we're going to.
And the sad part about that is if you get those hours and it returns title to, and they walk out the door, it's not a matter of, you, you don't want them to have the money or the benefit, but you have work on getting done that needs to be done, so you need to have some kind of plan to get through that.
And the ones that had the most, more highway workers.
Yeah.
And the one that had the least, believe it or not, was Sheriff's Department, they had two employees, two jail employees that had comp time, and none of the others had, had any.
Yeah, work on putting something together, we'll tweak it as we go along. Let's have that, as a, just a goal, I mean, by the end of the year, while it's not in place, we can start off with a new, not necessarily new, but at least a policy by.
Hey, I've already done all the legwork and research on it, it's just a matter of what practice we want to implement, because it breaks two ways on most of the issues, so.
Okay, okay, something else we need to approve. We met with the, the department heads multiple times. The incident committee, I guess, we call this committee a bunch of different names, whatever, emergency, emergency committee, COVID committee, whatever. Emergency management, emergency medical services, health department, sheriff's department, and I represented the commissioners, we met every Wednesday, we still do every Wednesday. And those are closed meetings because we're dealing with, with hip hop things and people's names and addresses and those types of things. So those are not open to the public, that's an incident command type of thing. And as we began to look at how we should reopen the courthouse to the public, and following the state guidelines, the CDC guidelines, and the White House guidelines, uh, we came up with a suggestion to them. Now, none of this was, we only discussed this twice as far as the group goes before we took it to the, to the, um, department heads. Because this is going to be a department head decision, this was nothing that we put together and took to the department heads and said, okay, this is what we're going to do. This is totally a decision made by the department heads, so I'm going to make sure everybody understands that. So they worked upon the recommendations that our committee had. This then is the, uh, plan, the phased reopening plan that they have taken then as a, as a plan to put in place. It's not in place yet because we haven't approved it as being our official reopening plan, so that's what we need to do today. So if you want to look at that for a minute, you got any questions? Is Chris back there somewhere?
Yeah, he is, you can come back, Chris.
My phone, Chris, you might have some questions, you're in the back. Oh, let's see that he's working back there in the dark, I went to you, that was, okay. Okay. Uh, so these guys, Chris is basically, I don't even know if Chris really researched all this stuff, he put CDC guidelines together, federal guidelines together, the White House, all these things. Came up with these recommendations, these suggestions, and, uh, so as you go through this, if you've got a question, he would be the one to tell you where it came from and what the plans were for you. Just to roughly give it to you, we, the, the plan calls for a staggered opening in the morning, so that all employees are lined up at the door and a bunch waiting to come in the door. Um, they expect to have temperatures taken, and their first time back, they had a list of about seven questions that we all had to answer if you go in someplace, have you been anyplace where you've had the flu, you've been out of the country, those, those types of things. So we only had to do that the one time, then after that point, then the department head, if anything changes in that employee, if they have gone someplace, then they need to tell the department head that they have. And the hope would be that maybe the department head at some point then will also take, uh, temperatures, because what we found was as people are coming in the door from outside, that forehead touchless wasn't working very well. Chris brought up that, in some major airports he had been at, they have a thermal imaging device that you walk past, kind of like a metal detector, you walk by, and if your temperature is above a certain level, it lights up and tells this person's hot, so. And they weren't that expensive, remember they were, they were in that four house range, was it something like that?
Yeah, that was one that Sheriff Cole had found, no touch, walk by, go. There's some other ones that are, that are pushing, uh, force working.
Are they?
Yeah, yeah, well, we, we, we need some more research.
And those are the things that this money that we're getting from the state, yes, that's what they're for. They're for us to get in position, to get in shape, and be able to handle this ongoing, and it's not going to go away apparently, so. You, anything you want to add to this other than what they're looking at here?
That was just recommendations of the bottom part of the chart is, uh, is a recommendation that I had, top part of the chart is what the state government's doing. And I was looking at mirroring the state government, how they did a phase opening, um, some of the recommendations that they had.
We had plastic class shields in place at all counties in the courthouse. The, whether the, everybody coming in has to have a mask, we had masks donated to us, so if a person coming in to, to have me, right now it's by appointment only, and not every office is taking appointments, but I think they are, I think they are. You know if they're all taking face-to-face appointments yet? Are the assessor and the.
And what the searchers in.
The ambulance searchers in, okay. One of the difficulties was people want to do title searches because they can't do their business, people can't sell their properties without title search. So those have come in. So as we phased this in, we'll get to where you'll still need to make an appointment, but the reason for the appointment is called is we have found that a lot of that work in the courthouse can be done remotely, people can keep, file their papers other places, find them other places. If you have to have a face-to-face, you can do that. And so, and I was, I'm assuming the next phase will be where appointment still, but you will have all face-to-face at that point. And then it shows here July fourth, this early, the state flips everything, we're back to whatever our normal is, whatever, whatever normal is going to be. So we are in the offices expecting the office holders to practice the distancing as they need. Whether their people wear masks in their office, the plan leaves that up to them. We do require all people coming into the courthouse, guests, public coming into courthouse to wear a mask. If they don't have one, we will provide them for them. If they want to keep that and take that with them when they leave, they're welcome to it, if not, we have a container to put them in, they will be then sanitized, re-washed, sanitized and reused, and repackaged and reused. You think I should have them leaving out on that?
I've got one question here on the state part, on the social gathering. Phase five after July fourth, it says a social gathering of up to two hundred and fifty people can take place.
Yeah, I would think that would be over.
Normal.
No.
It says up to.
Yeah, I would, I, I have to, I, I'll go back and see what that was, I thought that should be after four, if it was off here.
Yeah, I did, I wanted to say, I was wondering like about the, I had the gobs of people, I had the county.
Sure.
Is it going to be able to take place?
And that should occur, again, that question again, as of now, the, the producer said you can't.
Yes, it was our fair, it was lighter, so.
And, uh, I get questions all the time about the coverage festival, but I don't, I don't second that. Yeah, I, I'd like to see that over two hundred and fifty, uh, or just.
Yeah, because it says up to.
Yeah.
After July fourth, so.
And that's the, and that's the phase before, that's phase four, about two, two fifty. So many things.
Well, phase four, anything.
That's what I'm saying, well, phase four is two fifty, phase five should be over.
Should be over, and that's why I wondered if it was a mistake or.
Good catch, I'll, I'll check that.
All right.
Well, we, yeah, and, and, and that's just the state's recommendation, we can make it work. See, good catch, see anything else on there, you don't know?
Uh, everything else I thought of.
Taxes right now.
People that come last Friday, anything happen Friday, different, like.
No, me neither, no. Oh, well, I take that back. I take that back, you know, we were, we were coming staggered and leaving staggered.
Right.
And the question came up, uh, was that, uh, oh, some say they came in at eight thirty, they were supposed to take four thirty, or maybe they were leaving fifteen minutes early because the courthouse is closed, everybody's going, nothing's happening, wire is sticking around kind of thing. And then we talked about, amongst us, and it made sense, probably, coming in, you're going to stand in line waiting to get through the door and get in, but maybe they're not going to punch up, so we agreed to act on staggered coming in, but at four o'clock, everybody's free to go. Are you guys okay with that? And that way they can use what, uh, use the door, they don't want to, they don't want to. That way Don can make sure the doors are all secured when they leave at four o'clock. Don's concern was if he had to stay up for four, how does that work? And if you let your four, four, and people are going out the doors, we've had instances where they just don't get latched, just don't get locked. So, so the change on this, good question.
The department heads were good with this.
Yes.
The whole time I didn't go, so I just want to make sure they were still okay.
As a department head, you think anything different, you're okay with that?
I agree.
I think they were okay with everything, but, but that changed, that, that.
Were they good like ten minutes back as well?
Ten or fifteen minutes, whatever that is, yeah.
Yeah, ten.
Anything else, see anything else that you. We just need to get this voted on and codified as being our, our plan and we're operating by that plan.
Yeah, I'm fine with it, I don't mind if I have to get on the agenda. On the motion that we approved, the, the plan, uh, that has been presented, uh, to the department heads over the last few weeks. Uh, and, uh, I just want to also say, Jim's already said it, uh, publicly, thank Chris, Julie, Justin. I mean, everybody that's been involved with this whole thing, because we've all been something that ever had to deal with before, basically. Uh, and there was no blueprint, and there still is no blueprint. And, and so what these guys have done and ladies have done to, to try to keep us moving and try to follow all the recommendations and putting together these plans, uh, they have, uh, they've been outstanding. So I just want to, Chris, you and Julie and everybody to know that, how much I appreciate it, and Jim's already answered that, so, yeah, thank all of you.
So you want approval with the understanding that, that the phase five should be open rather than under two hundred and fifty people?
Yes. That's the only recommendation I have.
So you're checking in that motion, I'll second it. I'll bear it, yeah.
Fine.
Okay. Well, why, here, do you want to go back and forth, you guys thinking for us?
I, I just wanted to talk briefly about grants and, um, what we're looking at. So we're, we're concerned about, uh, grant management, because a lot of money's coming in, and we want to make sure that, uh, the money's spent accurately. So we discussed about on Wednesday having that meeting, uh, our partnership partners are going to come there because they have a lot of experience. They just kind of set up a framework for us to manage the grants, not determine the requirements, that would be, that would be the people out there, whether it's the EMS, the police departments, the department heads. We would just kind of figure out how we're going to account for it, reimburse it, collect the right documents, and then do those documents, get to the right, right people.
The recommendation that came from the Association of County Commissioners was that we hire a professional person, outside professional person to, to administer the grants and to seek all the grants, but we have two professional people to do that right here, Chris has done a great job seeking grants. And that is why C D does over partnership of our county, so we probably have that covered. But, uh, we're going to meet after our, um, our regular emergency team meeting, uh, Wednesday, we're going to meet and go over where all the grants are coming from. As you know, just from the, from the bills, the, the feds have passed, there's a lot of money being thrown, accessed from all different kinds of directions. So we just got to make sure that we, even aware which ones are available, make sure that we can get on board what those are available, find out what the requirements are to be eligible for that. Because anything, even in this one, the five hundred and forty-nine thousand, and it says in the letter, that anything that is found later could be fraudulent. If it was an invoice, we got to pay it back.
Yeah, and that's why, I mean, I really think it's a good thing, like our departments, anything, they've incurred masks and stuff.
Everything.
We, we just need to stress to them, they have got to keep receipts.
And it has to be outside of their normal budget amounts.
Yes. They just have to have receipts for it, so we can make sure they get paid, I have no problem with that, I can see them.
I find it amazing to hear, listen to, to Julie and Chris and Lydia when we're at these meetings, uh, when we're talking about those personal protection things, the masks or the gowns or face shields, they're in the same boat as everybody else in the country, trying to find vendors who make these things available. And Heather's been doing a lot of that, I guess, on Chris's behalf, and I think they're doing great to locate those. Chris had a contact, somebody that apparently was in China or from China or a China company, and that can fell through because he had a promise, but then nothing delivered. But, uh, I just, I don't, they did good, they did good.
Did you have anything you need to add, Julie? Can't keep you back here for a dollar.
No, I'm staying back here.
All right.
I just have my monthly report.
Okay, we'll get you there in a minute then, all right. Chris, anything else, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Well, Justin's not here, so you come on now, Julie, go on to.
Thank you, Chris.
Justin texted me that he, uh, childcare, childcare was shutting down earlier today, and his wife was working, so he had to pick up the child.
I just want you guys to know, Reid is like back there too.
Okay.
He's trying to hide around.
Okay.
Um, I think I gave you guys a report, I can't remember the last time, I think probably in March, so. I'll pass those around.
Before passing those, you might look into, you know, Brown County got that mystery, the standardized stuff, but since we have these funds, you might want to look at that, see if that was something we can look at.
We looked into some of that stuff, but I don't think the way our ambulance is set up, I'm not sure that would be best for us, because we, that leaves a lot of things that we have exposed. And we have to take everything off the truck, clean it separate and put it back on.
How about the fire department first responder trucks, do they need to be present there?
That would probably be a great thing for them, actually, especially the ones that qualify to be the BLS on transport, which every department has one of them. Um, it would probably be a great thing for them.
We'll bring that up together, I'm sorry.
Yes.
We have.
So I'll let you guys read through our responses, we've had a lot. Um, basically, sixty-nine transports in April less down from last year by probably twenty. So we did have a little bit of downfall there, we've kind of been on a roller coaster ride with our responses. They really never have a reason, sometimes we're, we're high on runs and sometimes we're really low.
Are you finding some transports down because people are afraid to go to the hospital because of it?
No, surprisingly enough, a lot of what we call our super users or frequent flyers or however you want to, the people that we attend to the most often. Um, we really aren't seeing a downturn in their visits, and they are incredibly immunocompromised. So, but some of them have been truly, really sick too. But we're not finding a lot of, a lot of that, we are finding a lot more people that prefer for us to check them at home and try to get them to stay at home. You know, they, they want to stay at home as long as possible, so we are finding that to be, um, on some people, yes. We did have twenty-six, this was as of Friday, uh, twenty-six COVID positive screens that we had responded on so far. Just from the ambulance point of view, I know that we did respond with some of the firefighters, fire departments there as well.
Are we still eighteen on the positives?
Yes.
Okay. Those are confirmed positives.
That includes clinical.
Okay, oh, it does include clinical.
I believe that includes a couple of clinical cases.
Difference between clinical and, and the other term, and one you get a test, you can test for it, and the clinical is, we haven't really been tested, but I, someone's made the diagnosis that you met the requirements to be considered clinical, okay?
They have very strict, I think people don't really understand, they have very strict criteria that you have to meet. So you have to meet criteria of a chest X-ray, a negative influenza screening, a negative strep throat screening, um, and certain markers on your lab values in order to be considered clinical, so you have to meet. It's not just a doctor saying, you don't fit anything else, so you're clinically COVID positive. You have to actually meet this criteria.
I don't know why I'm asking this, because it was on the internet, so I know it's got to be true or it may be on there.
It was on Facebook.
Yes, yes, so, but what it said was, if you've had the flu shot, are you going to test positive for the coronavirus, is that true?
That is not true.
Okay.
That is not.
I've seen that multiple times.
I can't, I just.
I know.
I also see that if you drank out of garden hose, that you are immune to it, and, okay, so you actually can.
Okay.
I still drink out of garden.
I asked the questions I want to ask you later.
The answer is no, it is not true. Um, and so I was concerned, and I went to you guys, I think it was in March, when, when we started seeing the pandemic slip come around, and I said, I think that our revenue is really going to be slow and we're going to have some issues because Medicare, Medicaid are going to shut down, and it turns out it's kind of the opposite. But I really do expect to see, so we're doing really good right now, but we're going to have kind of a lull, because our unemployment's been down. Um, and Medicare came in with the CARES Act, which we got stimulus money from, and that's essentially, most agencies are saying, you bill us and we'll pay you. And Medicare said, take this money, take whatever it is that you bill out of that and put the rest of it over there. We're not dealing with you anymore. So they gave us, and I put it in here, it's fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars, um, and that's our stimulus payment. But that has to cover all Medicare and Medicaid patients that have been treated or transported that are COVID potentials. So we can't bill those patients and we can't see reimbursement on those patients. Um, I did get. I did get our EMS training grant done, it was due April thirtieth. That was the one, it was two hundred thousand dollars, that was a no match grant that I've been trying to get. And of course, all this stuff came in from the middle of it, so it was a pain. So it was a two hundred thousand dollar no match grant, we applied for one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. I got it as close as I could. And that creates our training institution, that buys all the equipment that we need for that. That puts five people through medic school that I have that are employees now. Um, and that allows us to then be able to do all of our own E M T, first responder, continuing education in all the certification classes that we need to keep our certifications in-house instead of having an outside agency come in and do it.
How long's that meding course taken?
Eighteen months.
Yeah. You put these through this, then are they obligated to stay for?
So what we decided was we'll do like a five-year contract. If the county pays for any part of a paramedic course, um, which this grant would be considered part of that, it would be, they would have to sign a five-year employment contract.
And if they left, they'd have paid them out.
From, just to say it's structured.
So we won't ever be able to do paramedic classes at Park County because it has to go through a training university and it has to be attached to a training hospital. So we have a program that we're working with St Mary's of the Lord, setting that up. Hopefully, um, that'll get going soon and we'll have to listen to our people to that course. I'm pretty excited about that one. So as public as I can be with some of the numbers, some of the stuff we're not allowed to talk about, obviously. But we do, I do a Tuesday morning meeting with a five county committee that we have and then bring that information back Wednesday to the committee that we have here. So just kind of to randomize this, um, the test numbers are increasing locally, which is a good thing. We want to see that, we want to see as many tests being done as we can. So the amount of people seeking tests, especially with the clinic, have you heard about this one here?
Your company went through?
I don't know for sure yet. I heard that their numbers were, they were staying fairly high.
We have testing now at the senior center across from the bridge.
I thought it was like twenty-six on the first day or something like that.
That was the first day, but they've had, they've been open every day. But the test numbers are increasing, which is the, the, the doctors' offices are getting more tests in, which were impossible to get for a while. A coroner finally got some tests, that took forever. So we're seeing a lot more tests being done, which is good. The positive screens remain average, so we've kind of had the amount, the same amount across the board. We've not really seen a big drop in those yet. And the cases remain average, kind of as we drop off two that are positive, that are considered recovered, we gain two for some reason. I don't know why, that seems to be our seesaw, that it's two for two.
But everybody we've had is recovered?
No, we still have some that are still.
I mean, yeah, we've not had anybody die. I mean, we still have hospitalized.
So currently we had, uh, we've got five cases that are currently positive, like right now they're positive. We've got twelve of, of our positive people are recovered, that were actually tested positive. Six recovered clinical cases, we've got several that we're still following that are clinical cases or close contacts, actually that Lydia and the health department are following. Of our cases that we've had, five of them have been hospitalized, one has been in the ICU. None of them have been on ventilators and all of them have recovered. So we do still have one or two, I think, that are kind of on the, the modest severe end that, that we're following. But so far, we've done really well, we've been really lucky with that. And you guys did bring up my vacation stuff, did you already do all that stuff?
We haven't voted on that or anything yet, but we will. But, in fact, I saw the one number you appeared. What she's talking about was she had vacation, I'm having to use by a certain time, obviously she couldn't leave. Kind of like Bill, when Bill couldn't leave with dispatch, didn't have anybody to take his place. So what she's asking for is this extension, social law moves her vacation time to extend it to the end of the year, end of the year work.
My anniversary day came up on April fifth.
And she had planned on being gone, obviously, until this ended, so.
Yeah, I have no problem with it, she's been until the end of the year, I'm sure.
That's your motion?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll second that, so all fair and sound. Okay.
All right, uh, and then breakfast, our next breakfast is July nineteenth, hopefully we actually have it.
Okay. Anything from us? You guys got anything for her?
Thanks for all your hard work.
Hang in there.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Okay. Randy? Is he moving, is he still awake?
Thanks a lot, get up.
Did you get down on that, whatever that road was, the bottoms there that we went through the other day?
No, we haven't. And look, yes, another down there, we hadn't moved it out. It's going to do something.
I thought I saw it sitting there the other day.
Yeah. Had to move it out. Then big pipe he meant for one thousand south.
I got you. Before you get into your stuff, let me ask you about the stuff we talked about before. I got Justin about that, you know, new discovery road down, we're flex down there, so.
Did you take a picture of it?
Yeah, I got a lot of pictures of it and, and old pictures too. Yes, taking out the, the, then the pipe, the answer?
Definitely, hell.
Do you know if that's in our right of way or not?
No.
You don't know where it's not?
It's not.
So that, so that will be.
I appreciate it. Is there anything we can do in our right of way that would correct the problem?
I haven't been down there.
Not really.
That's what I was calling about earlier.
So that is, think, do you?
No areas where I sat. I mean, we can look closer to the ground, but if I can, it will be higher, so. I don't know what happened. We smack there and ditch it out too. There really doesn't seem to be.
So we need courts to decide that.
Okay.
Good, thanks. Go ahead, I just wanted to get that work thing done.
Did you tell them about the, uh, pipes we want them in for big energy?
No, I have not.
Okay. There's, uh, there's four holes, I believe, that, you know, those are released, the school road, it's leaning. We got to ditch there.
We don't have any idea when that ditch was dug.
You know that, how long that ditch been like that? It's been a few years, like, how many years it's been, a long time.
So Randy?
We'll clean it out.
Oh, so windstorms we had started playing over.
Jim and I, that gentleman, we do.
Just to eat something.
And, uh, we come up with a solution, maybe, okay? We will take a forty-foot, thirty-six inch pipe cut in four pieces, ten foot to each hole. And then back to an apple fifty-three and go back to the inside. It's going to make a little more work for us down the road. Get people to start getting four, you know, to clean that.
They thought that would take care of the problem, they're going to, the cost of the, the, the.
That whole cost, it was two hundred and forty-two dollars, sixty cents or something. I think we're going to try and do that the week after the morning.
Sorry, happy with the truck we got last night? I know they've been preparing a lot for you, okay?
Yeah. One thing about it, they're quickly getting repairs.
Are they? So was it always that? Yes. Problem, is that what the problem is with all of them?
Motion in league or a sensor somewhere else, you know. Couple of them, there's some wiring harnesses.
Is there anything we can do to keep that depth? I know it's just going to build up and it has to be, be taken care of, right? Is there any way we can do that on our own, so that's not have to take it out of service and send it down the path, or they have to do it?
They have to do it. Is it a regen problem?
Sometimes.
Some regen?
Or sometimes it's just, you know, you know, the sensor, the computer one shuts it off because there's something wrong with it. Shuts it off and closes it down. If the engine's involved.
It's bad.
Right.
It's.
And there's no warning? I mean, you've got a date planned, you're using it, then that comes up and there you are.
A lot of farmers is back through older trucks.
Take them off, right?
Yeah.
Couple of that issue with, you know, thousands of dollars.
Is it really just pig urine, is that what it is?
I don't know.
That's what I told you. Diesel something fuel, what is it called? Diesel?
The, uh.
The, uh. What we're talking about is this injects, it's a, it's a environmental control.
It's an injection fluid.
Yeah, I think that's what.
Injecting, okay.
That it, it freezes, it's, uh, it freezes in that tank, so it's rough.
Yeah, we keep ours inside. And early we've got, has a heater on the tank. On the twelve hundred winters.
Yeah, it's.
Falls out.
It created a nightmare.
Okay, so what else you got?
Well, I need, we're going to do, advertise for new dump truck.
How many trucks do we have now?
Fourteen of them, eight, eight.
How many tandems, how many singles?
Uh, we got two singles.
Two singles.
That's what we need to pass.
Yeah. Twelve tandems.
You guys want a copy of this fax?
I don't need it.
The same thing you did, give one.
Yeah, just, we just made some updated changes, I mean, you know, the updated. And then you get, you bring that and then if you would, sign, shoot, please.
You say it's one?
Yes.
But what's it year, the one you're taking out of service?
So.
How does it come in approximately, how many miles is this on?
Well.
Is that a guess?
Quite a few, yeah. I need to see on the look.
Okay, is it the oldest one?
Yeah, it's one they were shaving it in. Number thirty.
We need a motion out of the rising. Randy, to release notes to bidders that, uh, you can accept bids on a, you can max them up, sure.
I'd make that motion. I'll second that.
All fair and sound.
Okay. I just wondered what year you.
Two thousand three.
I'm just curious about how long they, how long it's getting out, how long it's lasting.
This is two thousand three, air nation, seven hundred.
Seventeen years old.
Yeah. We put another engine in it, uh, heater in it.
Laura has the tester, I think.
Oh.
Yes.
You go ahead.
Next thing I have is, I have two unofficially tours. First one is, uh, for US forty-one, they're just south of, it's in fifty north.
Yes.
Right north of one thousand. We're going to take out those two collars there and put a bridge in. Well, that's supposed to close today, I don't know if it did or not, but it said, sign said all thereafter, I did see that.
They were up there measuring today, but it wasn't closed yet.
Okay, I did see that that's the deter signs played up on two thirty says, air nation. Officially.
And how long have they been closed?
I don't know.
Four months, I think it's September. They should try to do a little bit.
They generally try and do that for.
Great festival, yeah.
But on that one, we need to get an official detour, one thousand north, part of the road, twelve hundred north. The originally, the originally one we used, narrow road, twelve hundred north, officially.
As the official?
Yeah.
Jeez, I think so.
Nobody talks about that.
Oh, man. We'd have, would have no road then.
And I think the official detour is to go up seven fifty west in, uh, government county, which is out there beside the lighters. And through there by the shades, now two thirty-four. That's between the government county. So, that's all right with you guys, signing that?
Need a motion to that?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we accept, uh, one of the deetours that Randy has given us for the closure of other four number.
I'll say, oh, there's a guy.
The other deetours were playground fifty-nine. Five point three, four miles south of, you know, thirty-six.
Where was it?
Five point three, four miles south of US thirty-six on fifty-nine.
Okay.
So the unofficial deetour for that would be, uh, Ferdinand Road, one thousand east, seven twenty south.
Yeah, seven twenty, they can't, semis can't go that way though.
No, we're gonna post it no seventy.
It's unofficial, right.
It's unofficial, yeah, yeah, unofficial. So again, that's already posted, they just gotta make sure they know that, can't go, so let's put it on both sides.
That's not the second one, man. Is the due care energy done with that?
That was, uh, uh, seven hundred years. Yeah, I think, uh, pretty much done.
Okay, I make a motion, we accept Randy's recommendation on the fifty-nine closure, three four, or five point three, four miles south of thirty-six on fifty-nine. I'll say.
Oh, there's a guy. Can you give me a time frame on that one? Fifty-nine?
No.
Says start July seventh. Don't have so much trouble taking on that last one, forwarding this. Say anything.
Yeah, you can letter our master to just. Next thing I have was, uh, some property, the Zach Lo.
That's Zach Lo there.
Behind you.
Behind your mask, 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 man.
Glad to meet you.
Like what?
Uh, it's an old county road that takes off the corner there on High Bridge, uh, there where, uh, uh, never seen you somewhere. You were a liar since.
Yes.
Around forty, go south, next corner.
Yes.
You're right straight ahead.
Yes.
You go down in our ways and then you go through the wood, kinda, down to a creek. Five small shallow. I think his question was, the old plaque shows the road going right straight up over a hill, and then continue on. Back in eighteen fifty, it had that helicopter, or a team of horses wagon up there, so they went around that hill.
Gotcha.
I presume that's where it's always been, but you can't, no indication of that back there.
The, is this a bandit, it's not?
No, I don't think it's a bandit. You know, I, Karen was talking, it hasn't been abandoned.
There's just no road there.
There's no road there.
Is it on, is it not on, I don't see this one.
It's not on, I ain't, it's always maintained.
What's the answer? What do you?
I think, just wanting your, the letter from you guys, that's my own, uh, stating that that's the way the road went, around that hill.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that, I, I, I think that's where we start, um, I'm, I'm here to ask you guys as much what I, what the answer might be as well.
That road around the hills, that on, so that's the property, that's the problem?
It, it is, it, it cuts into the neighbor's property, um, and I, I think Randy's been out and looked at it, we've looked at it, the, when we did the, we just purchased the place not too long ago. Uh, the title company, you know, ran it all through and I, I think it's very clear from the footprint of that road, uh, it's always been there. As Randy said, you're right, there's just no way, it just got drawn as a straight line at, at some time in the past. So I had the surveyor actually measure it, the, the current footprint, if you will, um, that's included in the county record with the survey. Um, we've got the coordinates of that, what I would ask this body to consider is to, to make that official, to recognize that that is where the, the road has always been, that's the county road footprint. Um, I don't know that that always gets us to then what next, because it, it's, right now, the, the problem is, um, we've got a good group of landowners there that I've met, everybody uses it pretty responsibly. But that's not the problem, right, it's, it's known to be a public road by enough people that go back there and, and tear it up, that, that, there's no incentive to fix the problem to, cause you can't run anybody off or anything else. So, I would, I would ask you all to kinda help us find a solution to it, uh, we're pretty agreeable, I just, uh, uh, we gotta start somewhere and I think recognition of where the actual footprint of the road is.
Is that the only way in, your landlocked, is that way in?
Yes, sir, yep, so we are landlocked otherwise.
They, they can't do that, can they, and they can't sell landlocked property, they can't.
Well, you gotta leave the deeds.
Yeah, gotta leave the deed, yeah.
Um, they can't do that, they can't sell landlocked property, but I, I don't know if it's as simple as just recognizing it as being the road either. My question was, is this subject to litigation between any of the landowners currently?
Not currently that we know about, and the title company was able to confirm that too when we closed.
And the landowners, the road passes over, are they willing to stipulate that that is the road?
Um, the, the two that are most impacted are, um, but I, I don't know, yeah, I mean, there's five landowners in total that this, this impacts.
The, the cleanest way to clean it up is to clean it up on the deeds and record though, um, would be the easiest way to clean it up. I actually just litigated something similar, this is from Billy County, maybe six months ago, um.
Is that something he needs to do or something we need?
It's something he will need to do, I mean, you certainly can, if you want to recognize that that's always been where the road's been.
Yeah, we can write letters and it's our understanding that it's always been there, but I mean, it's, we're supposed to be there in the end.
It won't give him the property interest that he's seeking though, as far as a legal right, say, fifty years from now to pass through there, you may still end up litigating that. I'd encourage you to talk to attorney about that, I can't really advise you on it, but if we just say that's where our understanding where the road's been, been.
Should that come from us or should it come from Randy?
I, it, probably, I mean, it's really up to Mr. Lowe, it's not gonna have any teeth from a legal standpoint, I guess is what I'm telling him.
What it blows down to would be, if this is on a road that we service or maintain, I don't open a can of worms, because it's a road that over by Paul and Rob, they had some issues with. And I don't wanna do one and knock the other, I don't wanna stick our neck out and say, this is what's the county road and then that's how you maintain it.
Reason I, I agree with you on that is because this other lawsuit that I have the conference call on tomorrow, that's the exact issue.
While you, while you're there, you tell us what to do. Can we say, can, can we say something that our understanding is that the county road went this far, or was the county road?
I guess, my question would be, what's the use in the county doing that, as far as for your standpoint?
Right, so, the, the way the old map is drawn, it just, like I said, just shows it as straight and there's this obvious little, little dog leg there, right? So, um, that we can't get to the place otherwise than by foot right now, right? So, our goal is to just, I mean, be able to get to it with a four wheeler or a truck or any, but that's also, I think, something for you all to consider, there is this old blown out culvert there, right? That, my concern is, um, I, I don't think you wanna be liable, or I wanna be liable, for repairs to the road, for the public, so I, I'm, I'm all for moving it to a resolution that says, look, th- this is where it is and it sets up as an easement or whatever that might be. Um, but I, I don't think we can do that without help from the county, uh, given the number of landowners, because it's, it's still, as, as Randy said, it's not abandoned. It is recorded as the access to these series of properties back there, um, so that's where I think some guidance from the county would, in, in my mind, um, keep it out of court and keep it pretty straightforward. And that's, that's just what we wanna do, right, um, we just wanna keep it simple and, but I don't, I don't wanna be a bad neighbor to, to new neighbors particularly.
It sounds like, to me, that it'd be a matter of just, an agreement between all of you who are affected by that, you just coming together and signing a paper saying we agree that this is gonna be used by all of us for that purpose, and the county road isn't having sale, that's not county property.
And at that point, you would be able to stop, you must complete the other, but you're gonna be able to stop people from coming back in.
Right, yeah.
It belongs to the five landowners.
But don't you all as a county have to decide to abandon it?
You'd have to file a petition to abandon it before they can decide that.
But we'd only be abandoning that part that goes to where it runs around the hilltop, right, so we're talking about that straight strip, yeah, and that, we'd have no problem with that, yeah, I wouldn't be wrong with that.
You, there, you'd just have to go through the formal process of filing petition.
Do you own both sides of that road, that, that stretch is kinda real?
No, sir, so that's, that, I've got a map, it would help, but, so there's a, about a quarter mile where we don't own either side of it. To get to our fifty acres, right, that, um, and then there's another landowner back there that's in a similar situation.
You probably know how abandonment's work, if whoever owns both sides are going home to the middle now, so that's, that's agreement with them, that's okay, go ahead and use that, if, if we abandon that.
Yeah, and then we just have to draw up the easement.
And we just typically have never abandoned a road that there was a conflict over between a homeowner, so that landowner, if they have a conflict, we don't go down that path, so, if you all come together, we'll, we'll do whatever we can do to, our part.
It's not on inventory or maintain. Yeah, we'll be more than happy to.
Devest, divesting the road, right, yeah.
If you five can make agreement, that you will allow us to stop people from going back in there.
But that would help you if all the landowners agree to let you drive on it once they've got their.
Right, that's exactly, so I, I have no interest in not seeing it be a county road unless everybody agrees that, yeah.
That's probably your cleaner process.
Now, could the county provide documentation of the footprint of the road, right, confirm that?
You got a, you got a map of that showing that?
It, Mr. Watson, you know, like Chris would have, is there anything, how far back can we go that shows the road where it's at? Because what, what you're saying, it originally showed a straight line through there, what he's wanting to know is how, or what I think he's wanting to know is how far back can we go showing that it actually went around the hill? Do we have any records, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say, I don't know.
Have you been to the plat office to see what, how they have it drawn up and everything?
Yeah, and that would, that's the crux of the issue, right, so they show it as a straight line, but, but when you go back and look at it, I mean, you can see the road bit, just when it was a wagon road and when they put in High Ridge Road. You all did what I would have done, you said, we're not using that anymore, right, so, um, so that, I mean, that makes total sense, but, but that is our only access to the property, which is our, our primary concern.
Well, I perfectly fine, you leaving that, as the counter, if you don't wanna abandon that part, that give you access at least to that.
Yes.
Breakoff point where you do have to go around the hill, which you, and that reduces the numbers of landowners you have to deal with or anything, I mean, we can do that too, so whatever, whatever works to benefit you.
Is there, is there any way to, um, does the county have the ability to, to essentially close a county road for dry use only, or, uh, because then that, as a landowner, I, I, there's very little incentive for me to invest in cleaning up the road, right? Um, and for instance, this little crossing, for me, I would put a small bridge across there and make it suitable for a small tractor and a four wheeler.
How do we do that, man, do we close other, other roads for private use?
Well, if you're abandoning, if the county abandons the road, then it becomes part of the property.
Yeah, I, I don't think. Whether they want it or not, we get to abandon it.
Well, I mean, if they, you abandon it, it becomes theirs, they don't have to necessarily want it for you to.
Yeah, my, my concern is if we abandon it, as long as those two landowners are on your side, and they, and they may not wanna grant information to drive in there.
Right.
We don't have to abandon until he gets an agreement with everyone.
Right, that's what I would do.
But we don't wanna maintain, we've got one road.
As it stands right now, there's a legal issue there between the landowners, that's that you're passing over the road or not passing over the road.
Right.
The county, if it went to a lawsuit, would have standing because we could argue that the county has been traditionally using it as the county road, it's been traveled all by the public. Uh, and that's what's the crux of our argument over in Perrinsville, was that there was an alleyway that had been pretty much abandoned but not abandoned.
I'd say if you get an agreement with all you guys, that's gonna be okay, we'll do whatever you want, if you want us to abandon it, we can abandon it, if you want us to keep it.
Sure.
We'll keep it, it's not maintained, but we'll keep it as.
Okay. And if, and if we can't get agreement among the landowners, come back to here?
Yeah, we won't have any control over that, where, where, where it goes around the hill on private property, we wouldn't have any say over that.
Right.
That's one of those tough, tough things, you know, I think a hundred years ago, they just go and people just get along and they just stuff, but, that's why we have so many roads with ninety degrees going down.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Such, and all that stuff, you know, and.
Yeah.
Have at least resistance.
And that's certainly what this one is, so.
But we're certainly geared to whatever we can do to help you get that, get that done, if you let us know what you need us to.
And if you're, if you're not getting any resistance from the others, then maybe a good time to try to get together, put your heads together.
It seems, everybody seems pretty agreeable on it.
It's easier to do it now than down the road, someone else selling something.
Until you done submit what I'm at, now you're out of luck.
Yeah, that's exactly right, that's why I've been parking at the paved road and walking back.
And that's why a letter from us wouldn't really necessarily get you where you want to go.
Right, yeah.
Because even if the county wrote the letter down the road, if they wanna put a, you know, gate across the road, you're still gonna be litigating that regardless of what letter you have.
Right, yeah, got it, okay.
It's the last thing you need.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep, good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
It happens a lot. Oh, again, it's real common.
What else you got, Randy?
What do I got? Two thousand twenty one objects.
Is it four sixty that goes into Bloomingdale Offa?
Uh-huh.
Is that on the plan, is it, do something like that? We're gonna be.
Not this year.
Not twenty?
No, our money's going out of that point.
Good.
These are the ones we drove the last year, remember?
Yeah, yeah, oh, I know, I'm just looking down the road, next, next round of grants, if we can get that included in there, we can do.
Yeah, I did, I guess.
The hot mix are all the ones that were paid by the grant.
Yes.
And so we're talking about a total of ten miles here, the cost of a little over a million dollars. Our share is two hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
Yeah. With the exception of three fifty more, and five seventy, and Secondmore Street, there in Judson. That was gonna be hot mix, we were paying for that. Cause that was originally in the grant. The road don't change numbers for us, but it did on that state.
There's a section of road, road on what they're doing, what they're paving, but there was, they threw it out because the name wasn't right on that, with their list compared to our list, so.
Just like the Armory's first road.
So, and suddenly, suddenly in that gap there, not hot mix between two spots, we're gonna pay for doing the, doing the, doing the gap, how, how long is that gap in the middle? Yeah, yeah, four cents a month, yeah, yeah, I got it here, less than half a month.
So we're facing.
Yeah.
We're looking at Coxville Road, basically, what we call Coxville Road.
For seven hundred into Coxville, Rosedale.
So, so Rosedale City, okay. And then.
Judson Road, Secondmore Street, north to two thirty-six. At one thousand south. Broke, that broke down in two sections, six twenty-five west to three fifty west, and then three fifty west going into Millville City, I guess.
Then we got nine hundred south, we got also highway forty.
Yeah, we're gonna do that ourselves.
To the top of it, that is, that's fifty ten for actual.
It's just based on ten miles, we're costing a million bucks.
Yeah.
We could do with another seventy million dollars, so we can.
Then we're gonna do it later there, ourselves, we're gonna do, uh, twelve hundred east. Putton County Line, down to Frontale Road. It's all gonna be paved and, uh, and, uh, Putton County Line down to three yards or south, we're gonna line that up, it's horrible. I'm gonna have some big lines that I've gotten to. And back that, we're gonna take over the top of it. And a chip and seal, twelve hundred north, seven, that's US forty-one, to Narrows Road. And twelve hundred north, Narrows Road to five hundred east, we're gonna double chip and seal that, cause it's getting pretty cracked.
Yeah.
Pretty rough, I'll smooth it up a little bit. And River Road from Onzeville, back around to six hundred west, chip and seal that. And just sealing, that's using that stuff we sprayed all last year. We'll do Narrows Road to forty-seven, seven to the bridge.
Denman?
Yeah, Denman Road, and the gravel, Angel Road, four fifty west, nine hundred north, nine hundred north. Uh, Slab Road, that was made last year, gravel, and Route fifty-nine, Brooks Road, one thousand south to the gravel, West Street, go off to five hundred north, Streets of Whiteman.
All the streets of Whiteman, yeah.
And then I did have to mention Narrows Road, on the bridge to Carton Road, we're gonna pay that.
Okay.
So if I just approve along that, I'll.
Is there a motion?
Know the law, we just wanted to make it clear.
I make a motion, we approve the twenty-twenty road project, if we can just stop you, and also.
Oh, there's a guy. When will the next grant round be requested?
Yes, July.
Okay.
Last I heard was one in July.
Here, you can have my. Okay, anything else?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I heard you had an motorcycle check.
Yeah.
Was money, twelve grand or something? No, how much was, that's the wrong one, that's the other anti-check, how much is yours?
Uh, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents, Alley, Alley Electrical, uh, little drops got wires on the pole to a little shed with gene term motors.
Okay.
Over the visor and stuff, so that's what it's, we're gonna repair that. Our insurance is about, about, about.
Do you need a motion to approve that?
Did you have a second?
No, this is, yes, I did, uh.
I saw a clink down there.
I saw that, yeah.
I'll make a motion, we approve a motorcycle check, get my check, Alley Electrical for seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents, I'll say.
Oh, there's a guy. All right, here you go. Can I ask, you have more?
Uh, this, first thing. This is our annual report. For last year. Look over, look at.
You got one?
Yeah. Do you need that, have you decided this evening? Or is it due June first, I think it is.
It's one of those things, I didn't, uh, have no knowledge, we see this thing, and we got a whole bunch of numbers that we just have to sign off on that they're correct and we don't know if they're correct or not, but we're signing off on. Is there a motion approved via annual operational report?
I make a motion, we approve the annual operational report, submitted by the highway department, and also the.
Oh, there's a guy. You got one you want to sign or you want?
You got a, you're the speaker. That's all I have, if you guys have anything to say.
You have this road test, I did have another question for you before you have it, what bridges you're gonna need to make your, I got last year.
I got three.
The one you did last year, the annual report, not by John, the sixty-third, Asbury.
Oh, yeah.
What, what do you have on the? That's a good three, uh, what do you have on the rest now?
I've got three big collards ordered, replace, uh, one of the little structure there on Mill Road. And we had one that had a bit hole come in on four seven east, there's a sign of five hundred, we got it closed. And, uh, oh, we got another one for Sawmill Road.
Size?
Size, knocked off of it.
That was all, the problem with Sawmill was, right, the size of that bridge had been knocked off, yeah, so what do you put in, in place of it?
Put in a pipe arch.
Just a pipe, okay, would be size on it?
No, it's just long enough where we have it.
Okay, okay.
I see, they did some inspections too, so.
Uh-huh, yeah, I think they're done with that.
Mike Farrar asked me the other day, if there was anything they could do for us, uh, parties, and, like, small structure inspection, or small bridge inspections, do we, do we have anything outside of our normal bridge inspections that we do? So I thought I wouldn't worry if we did anything outside of normal bridge inspection, so, apparently some counties doesn't have, some I do, there are small structures as well, culverts.
Some do.
Okay, that's what you talked about, but I didn't think we did that. Yeah, I had that discussion with a guy, actually, the guy started off, he was a little tense, he works for Beagle, and his income tax, um, our county's about twice what it was there, and he just didn't realize that guy was, you know, the roads like that, so. I explained to him, he said, well, isn't there somebody getting that information? Actually, he was fine after that, I said, you know, Beagle has eight hundred miles of road, we've got seven hundred and forty miles of road, and we all get the same amount of money per road, baseball, just take formula. But above that gap, they have income tax, they can put it for the shortage, one of the, one of the local income, option, option income taxes. I said, so they got eight hundred miles, we got seven hundred and forty miles of road, they have a hundred and seven thousand people to share that cost, but we have seventeen thousand people to share that cost? He said, well, well, that can't be right, that's, that's what it is, folks, a hundred and seven thousand people versus seventeen thousand people, it's gonna cost you thousands more, because we have the same cost. And he just didn't realize it, oh, he was fine after that, he said, well, more people need to know that, well, everybody should know that. Uh, and then I told him about, uh, Dan, but I just talked with their highway engineer here, just not long ago, uh, they've got, uh, right at the same, almost exact same number of miles we have, about seven hundred and fifty miles, we have seven hundred and forty. And their budget, our, our budget's about four million? Close to four million, their budget's fourteen million, their highway department budget, for the same amount of roads we have, that's just highway department budget, is almost equal to the entire county budget that we have, so I can't, I can't imagine having that luxury.
I, I, I think Slash, Sheriff Chen, was running the numbers, and we was at, with grants, everything, it seemed like we was at about six million to take care of everything we had.
With income, everything coming in, okay?
And Hamilton, I think, was twenty-six million, and they had less than two, less than twice the amount, they got, I wanna say fourteen hundred and seven miles.
Amazing, just left to, just people.
I'm looking to see, God, something like a bend in roads, and, uh, grant paid, which is, yeah.
Look up the county.
And, uh, putting on a wrench, I don't know, two and three, and all that. And, uh, yeah, uh, how much is your, your bridge, like, a three million dollar?
Just in your, your bridge fund? And what's ours?
About three hundred sixty-five thousand.
I was gonna say two fifty, so about three hundred fifty thousand, yeah.
Ten times.
Yeah. It's amazing, it's, it's, you watch, if I might drive down the road, there's nothing but patches, you know, we, we hate that, we hate that, yeah, yeah. And to think you got ten miles from a grant, ten miles here, it's ten miles, about seven hundred miles of road, ten miles for a million dollars.
They asked you on the census advertising, you know?
Yeah, yeah, really, you don't need to deliver, but send us your money, just, just print us a check, yeah, jeez.
You know, everyone has a lot of people that, they don't understand that they don't have any research.
They don't understand, he was, I mean, he was my best buddy after that, he was fine after that, he's, he, I said, he said he had no clue, he said, well, of course, that's what they're reading, yeah, that's what it is, because most of it comes from vehicle, uh, fund, or, or two funds are paying to that. But anything above that has to come from local option income tax, and that's where we're getting from, so we've got seventeen thousand people to make up that same amount of dollar difference, and they've got a hundred and seven thousand people to make up that difference, so they have tax.
Yeah, I guess about seven percent of that tax.
Yeah. Yep.
And the state police, up, center there, these faces, and all that.
Well, they finally took their pension out of it, the way the state police, or they finally took that out.
They was getting nine cents on it, for a eighth of a gallon.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay. Anybody have any comments?
Yep.
I got a question, you know, on these, I heard you talking about the fire departments and stuff.
Uh-huh.
Are they gonna do, you know, any testing for those guys?
That's up to the state, I don't know how they do that.
I, I was just wondering, because.
Right now, our only testing is, is if you are symptomatic, if you're signed by, if you're sent by a doctor, yes. Now, they can go online, and I posted that the other day, they can go online and to register for testing, anybody, anybody can, we all can. And you'll have notes for most of the responses about if you've had a fever, and those kinds of things, but then there is a category, it says pretty much that is, if there's any other reason why you feel you shouldn't be tested, then they're pretty much gonna take it. So anybody, anybody can, if they wanna initiate that process to do that.
I think you do it online then?
Yes, yes.
Cause I didn't, I didn't know you was talking about this money, and he's gonna get with these departments.
Oh, no, this money is different thing, this is COVID related, but it's not, it's not come up that it's gonna be for testing, it's just for the expenses, like the, uh, you know, the sanitizing and all, and, and personal protection equipment, all those kinds of things.
Yeah, just like the.
But that's a good question, though, I'll find out about that, if we can use some unmade and made for testing for those kind of types of people, yeah.
Yeah, because you, you know, you got all, they're actually volunteers, and these people.
Good question, I'll find out.
They work out, they work outside the county, most of them.
But any of them can, the way I understand it, anybody can go to that, that coronavirus response from the state, and register for testing, and if you, uh, no take about anybody, if you feel for some reason you need to do that, yeah.
Yeah, cause, cause I was, I was wondering about that, cause the last trip I made to the VA up here, courthouse, they said it had a big sign up there, it looked real cool, they're testing, walk in the door, and they ask you if you've been out of the state, been out of the country, if you had a fever, or if you had a cold.
Those are the CDC questions.
Yeah, then they give you a sticker, you walk in.
Yeah, that's the CDC questions.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thanks for having us.